Yeah, whenever you ready. Good evening, it's seven thirty Tuesday, May twentieth, two thousand twenty five. We now call to order the historic town of Eatonville regular council meeting. Mrs. King, would you please very quick form?
Councilman Mack.
Yes.
Councilman Randolph.
Here.
Councilman Daniels will not be here tonight. Vice, uh, Mayor Washington.
Chris.
And Mayor Gardner.
Here, please.
You have apple.
Thank you. Please stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. National Public Works Week, we do have a proclamation. For May eighteenth through, through the twenty fourth is National Public Works, and we can say without a shadow, shadow of a doubt, things would be a little differently, different and look a little different if we did not have our public works staff. So proclamation, office of the mayor, town of Eatonville, Florida. National Public Works Week, May eighteenth through the twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five. People Purpose Presence. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient, resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the historic town of Eatonville. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the town of Eatonville to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year two thousand twenty five marks the sixty-fifth annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the town of Eatonville, Orange County, Florida, along with Mayor Angie Gardner, Vice Mayor Theo Washington, council members Rodney Daniels, Torres Mack, and Wanda Randolph, does hereby designate the week of May eighteenth through the twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five, as National Public Works Week, and urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advan- advancing quality of life for all. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cost so the town of Eatonville, Florida, to be a fix this sixth of May, two thousand twenty five, Angie Gardner, Mayor, Veronica L. King, Town Clerk. And with that being said, this money has just stucked in, and I think we do go around.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to put this in the confirmation. So you put it in your office somewhere.
Oh, yes. Thank you, thank you very much. I'll share it with the staff, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mayor, they want to take, take y'all picture.
Let me do this.
Get you itching for it. Yes.
On the sign, you know, y'all gotta make it up.
Did y'all take a picture last night? Gosh. I don't know, something once. Do we take? Two thousand.
This one do.
Please sit down. Two thousand seventy. Take all of this on this.
Yes. There you go.
Something to look. Okay. Why would you?
Pretty red. Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. The next item on the agenda is the approval. Is there a motion approved? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, the agenda has been approved, citizen participation.
Yes, we have, uh, Ms. Joseph Harvey.
I walk here all slow. But like I said, I need to see my bring your weapons. Down the door. See that I'm probably ready. So, there was a misunderstanding, and you know, I always come loud with my misunderstanding, right or wrong, I would say that if I, if I believe it. So it's about preserving our historic buildings, and for those of you who work at another meeting, and I was impressed because Vice Mayor Washington even agreed, I was like, stressing off he knocking down stuff in the middle of the night, you know. Um, citizens have a right to talk about things that we care about. And so, um, we are continuing the discussion about a grant that is supposed to be for providing serving, like, uh, maybe just like hundred twenty-five thousand dollars from the national trust to look at buildings that we may want to leave historic. Okay, but there's miscommunication about some of that, so that's what people are punishing each other about in fact. But she caught me before I could come up here and really throw some blows, so I'm like, dang. But, but the point is to resolve it so that we can save buildings that we want and have people notified in advance. So that was it, so thank you for the conversation. We will continue, you know, out in the talk, so. I'll say it with you before I come up here, and I also want to say there are some brilliant people. It's like, I was so excited to see Johnson and Thomas. I'm like, if y'all just keep talking, you gonna solve all the problems in this town because you're both brilliant, and I appreciate you. Don't look at me like that, but you guys are brilliant, and I appreciate you and really, and I am just proud of you. If I never hear again, I know that, you know, you will eventually raise hell even better than I will eventually. And 'cause just, just, there's, there's a lot of brilliant young people here, and I hope that they get to christitate more, and thank you, Mayor, on everything.
Right now, me on the, why, Angela Thomas.
I'm talking about the grant too. I did attend the meeting Saturday. Um, and my question to them was, was this grant for the town or was this grant for P E C? P E C has nothing to do with the town and the town administration, so if that's the case, I don't think we should even, my personal opinion, I don't think we should entertain it because if the money is not going to the town, our historic preservation board to do this, it's a waste of time. If they want to do it, let them do it on their own, but stop trying to, uh, involve the town in P E C. P E C is a nonprofit, may be a for-profit, I don't care what profit, but it doesn't profit the town, so. That's my opinion on that, and I just want to know where we at on it, and if it is for both P E C and the town, I'm gonna give you my personal opinion. Don't sign that agreement, that's my personal opinion. So the next one is.
I'm gonna give you the data.
No, no, no. I, I'm gonna say what I gotta say, and I don't think Miss N Y need to be involved with what considers with the town. She's been around for thirty years, and like I said during the meeting, no offensement to her, and which I'm not trying to offend anyone, these are my personal opinion. So my other one is, I want to thank the mayor and Ms. Randolph about the loud noise, and y'all know how I am about loud noise. You can play your music, but when your music vibrates so much and it vibrates my house, that's a lot of. I never heard the music from, I always call it heroes. I never heard the music from, I guess it was Neeks when it was there, but Sunday, I, I did call the police, and I will call the police every day because I don't think that if it's a restaurant, let it be a restaurant. If it's a club, let it be a club, but don't let your music disturb you. Um, and that's on that, and now we working on the ordinance for that. And the other one is, uh, Vice Mayor Washington had mentioned about the taxes. Where are we on the non-apparent taxes and, uh, I assume we're gonna, uh, provide something on that. You don't have answers for that, but do something about loud music more, more important, that's what I.
Yes.
Was important.
Not.
Not.
Is there a one else?
Yes, our last one is, um, Ms. Mary Davis Johnson.
Good evening, first I'd like to thank you, Mayor Sardar, the councilmen of Eatonville, as well as the members in the city of Eatonville. I want to thank you because you openly opened your arms and welcomed us, um, to, uh, join the city of Eatonville to bring our youth program. And I want to thank you, we have a summer youth program that will be offering in conjunction with the city of Eatonville at the Denton Center, where we offer pre-employment training for youth ages fourteen to twenty-one. We, um, bring them in, we do pre-employment training, financial literacy, as well as college training. So I want to thank you all for welcoming us.
Thank you. It's Johnson, what?
Yes.
That sounds funny, seriously. Now, is there anyone else? That would be glad. All right, thank you. Um, finally consent agenda, just the two items, is there a motion to approve?
The move.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. All right, consent agenda has been approved. No points decisions. No chief administrative officers.
No attorney.
We have, uh, we have an attorney.
Uh, we do have an attorney who will report to get ahead of the question. Uh, I did with an email, but I didn't find out until the day after the meeting that there was a lawsuit pending against the city that I did not know about, the town I know about. I didn't know about it because it had been tendered over to Insurance Defense Council. I've been told that in the future, I'll be told when that happens. Um, and so I, that was not me intentionally misleading, I just, I just didn't know. Um, but there is a lawsuit, I don't even know any of the facts of it, except that it's been filed. Maybe Mayor or somebody can tell you what it's about, but what I sent you all is what I know, and that's literally all I know.
Can I just apologize because if, and I thought that it was sent, that you just hadn't read your emails. It was like twenty-four, forty-eight hour before that meeting ends, that we not, so I apologize. But instead of me talking about it, I'd rather just, um, if you can meet with Mr. Presley.
So that's it, and in terms of anything else, um, I, I, I told you that the CRA stuff didn't pass, right? I made that announcement before, so I think, okay. So that's nothing new, and there really is nothing else new to report, except that I'm hoping that in the very near future, we'll have something good to say about hunger.
All right, that's it.
Yeah, that's a quick reminder to the public that we do have, um, a special voting election coming up uh, for District fifteen, and so you can mark your calendar for the early voting. Starts June fourteenth through June twenty-second, and the election day will be June twenty-four. And then for the general election will be August the twenty-third through August thirty-first, and the actual election day will be September the second. The town of Eatonville will be a free, a voting precinct. And early voting as well as the election day. Again, this is a special election for District, uh, fifteen. Uh, I believe one of our meetings will be affected, your councilor will let you know. Uh, and we will, uh, schedule to have that meeting over at the Dent Johnson.
Thank you.
All right, um, first of all, good evening, everyone. I would just like to thank everybody for coming out, being engaged in council, um, meetings. I think it's important that we, you know, create a world that we have, um, council meetings on every first Tuesdays and third, um, Tuesdays. Encourage, encourage people to come out, because a lot of times people have questions and concerns not knowing that they come here and show all their concerns and, and the question that they may have and, um, address to us, so I just wanted to put that out there. First of all, also, I would like to, um, just address the idea of just having, um, some lifeguards to, um, have at the pool. I know we can probably come up with some kind of financial idea to, um, fund that because we've had some issues in the past to where we can't have a pool open because of, um, whatever deal it is that we don't have lifeguard, so hopefully we can move forward with getting that done as well. And I know I spoke about the, um, community land trust also during the, um, course of the, um, meeting that we had during CRA, so hopefully we can go in a different direction and corresponding with that also, whatever makes sense for the community, I think, would be, um, that's it. And also congratulations to, um, Ms. Mandy and the staff for the, um, Staff Public Works Week. You're a sensational job, um, I can't tell you enough how, you know, grateful I am to have you as a staff member and the director especially, because I know the work that you put in, you know, especially with all the grants that you're dealing with right now, that's gonna essentially help the community. So thank you, and I want to definitely give you your flowers now and a big salute for everything that you do on a daily basis, you and your staff, so thank you also very much.
Thank you.
To that, and, um, my condolences to everybody that have suffered and lost them. I just actually came from Del A for, been a, a week putting away my, um, fallen love, you know, it's never easy losing in the loved ones, man. So, um, anyone that have, you know, sustained a loss in the loved ones, man, my heart go out to you. So I know how important it is to, you know, just love on people, you know, because tomorrow's not promised to them, so I want to, you know, just tell everybody here that I love you also, man, and, you know, and the one that have suffered and the, um, you know, loved one, you know, dying in this community, because I, I had to say this also, um, David Culpeper, he was someone that I grew up with. He was a few years older than I was, but he just, um, lost his life on last week. And then it just actually happened, um, very, I think, this past week, that's why I wasn't able to make it, but my heart and, um, prayers go out to the Culpep, the Culpep.
Culpep.
The Culpep family. Um, he was someone that, um, I looked up to as a kid, and, um, when you're gone, you're gone, man. So, you know, out to the family, I send you guys my condolences. Um, Attorney Shepherd, you've already answered my question to what I had, um, also. And also, I would just like to give a big thank you to the staff members. Every staff member, um, for the town of Eatonville, because I know this can't move without you guys. You guys made this operation move. I got a full-time job that I have outside of town of Eatonville, and I know we can't get anything done, um, without the staff, and I mean, every staff member that worked for this, um, um, town. And on the other side, with the other agencies, um, interns of the CRA, because I know we're in an ill-advised agreement. So thank you all for doing all the work that you do on a daily basis. And, um, also, when we start looking at, this will be a question for you, Ms. Gibson. Uh, when we actually start looking into, um, doing workshops for the budget, officially here that's coming up, and I know it comes up rapidly, so if you, you ain't got an answer now, shoot me an email or what happened. I just wanted to make sure that we're on top of that, because a lot of times we get behind the eight ball, and I don't want to do that moving forward.
There's a schedule be coming out next week.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, and also some of the, um, important things I want to talk about, I have my annual cleanup, which will be taking place on June fourteenth. I encourage anybody that want to be a volunteer to come out, is actually gonna start at eight A M. and go into one P M. We're gonna have the vendors who is, um, Waste Pro come out and take anything inside or outside of your home that you don't want, as long as it's not hazardous materials. We're gonna toss it away, and it's something that we do annually, and it's a, you know, very successful, um, cleanup effort. Every year we do it, so, uh, we're gonna have music, we're gonna have free food. Um, it's gonna be sponsored by the town of Eatonville, and of course Waste Pro, or anybody else that want to come out and sponsor it as well, you, you're going to come out. But I encourage anybody that wanted to do this and be a help in the town of Eatonville and many of you in our community to come out June fourteenth and be a part of what we got going on. And also, um, a very important day is June tenth, which starts on the nineteenth, which is on a Thursday. We're gonna be doing a lot of different things in terms of, you know, just, you know, doing community stuff, making sure that we know the significance of how important June tenth is because it's, 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 it's important that we educate our people, um, and not just us, other people also, you know, how important our culture is, and the historic town of Eatonville, being as old as black municipality in America, I think it's very important that we spread our wings and let people know who we are as, um, as people, you know, same, because a lot of people lose the identity, identification on who they are a lot of times by not knowing the history. You're nothing without your history, you know, and I encourage people to continue reading on the history of Eatonville, how important it is, and the twenty-seven man that found this, um, community, and it was established August fifteenth, eighteen eighty-seven. So that definitely resonates with me with knowing all the important thing that in the history, you know, there's so much rich history here, you know. That's why so many people want to come here in terms of just buying up the homes. Well, we can't allow that because, you know, at a loan rate, we got ownership under thirty percent in Eatonville. But what I think is important is that we're buying these properties and these lands while we can build affordable homes for people to be able to buy, um, homes in the town of Eatonville, you know. And, uh, making sure that we're doing everything in our power to make sure that we're successful moving forward, you know. Like I often tell people, man, you don't have to move out of Eatonville to better yourself, you know. I had an opportunity to go to college and come back and support my community. You know, same thing I tell my son, he's in college now. Went to school early, as a matter of fact, and he want to come back and be a part of, uh, what we got going on in Eatonville. So we got to continue that path and how we, you know what I'm saying, functionally, um, move forward, doing all the things that's gonna be sustaining for this community and making sure that we're successful at all times. Also, we're gonna have a kickoff summer block party at the, um, town Eatonville pool, which will be taking place, um, I believe this weekend, am I correct?
Mm-hmm, Friday.
Friday, next?
Next week.
Next Friday.
Day Friday?
No, Friday.
Twenty-seventh, it might be Wednesday.
It's not the twenty-third?
I don't know.
The after.
Well, it's gonna be.
The after-school jam is at the pool on, uh, Friday.
Okay, it's gonna be from four P M. to six P M. Gonna have free food, drinks, games, and other activities. We're gonna have community, um, resources that you guys can, um, feed off. We're gonna have a food pantry giveaway, so that's gonna be huge for anybody that, you know, is in need of food, and I know how hard and crazy it is. I, I hit it, you know, purchase food now with the inflation going up, with prices being so ridiculous. But, um, I want to make sure all minds and hearts are clear, I think that's my report. And, um, also, yeah, one more thing, I would like to thank Ms. Johnson for being up and, um, doing her presentation and just bringing her program into our community because all the things that you have mentioned are very important, you know, especially with the educational purpose of, you know, people that haven't had an opportunity to go to school in the past to get the privilege to do it now. So thank God for people like you who want to bring your resources into our community because you didn't have to do that, but you are, and I want to salute you also for doing the work that you're doing. And, um, it's all minds and hearts are clear, that's my report, thank you all, I'm happy to hear you.
Housewoman Randolph, thank you. Oh, wait, wait, um, June fourteenth?
June fourteen.
It's early voting. So usually you meet here for that cleanup?
Yes.
So I'd have to meet somewhere else.
Okay.
Because I don't think.
Is that doing, uh?
Because they're in and out for that cleanup, right? They're in and out for the cleanup, right? And they're voting here, so, but Mr. Presley, just give him Mr. Presley.
Mr. Presley, I am ready.
But.
There's a lot of different things going on at the time.
So it's early voting, I don't know if all, so just make sure.
Okay, I'll speak with them.
Yes.
We, even if we have to check today, we will, everybody's just want to make sure that we're all on the same accord, so.
And there for, just for point of clarity, it is, uh, May twenty-seventh, forty-sixth for the block party.
Yes, twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
Next week, next, as next.
Yes, forty-sixth, that's like Tuesday.
Yeah, it's next Tuesday.
The block party?
The block party is Tuesday, the end-of-school jam is what, Friday?
Oh, it's Friday, okay. So two things, block party, end-of-school jam.
This is cut? Forty-sixth.
Forty-sixth. Twelve.
Housewoman, Housewoman.
Yeah, good evening, everyone.
Good.
Uh, first of all, uh, I would like to thank, uh, Ms. Mandy for fantastic job and what she does, and that recognition that she received is very well deserved. And also thank you to all the employees for what you do. And also thank you to all the employees for what you do here at the town. I would like to say that I did attend a historic preservation workshop at the library. Uh, about a week ago, and the uh conversation came up about the hundred twenty-five thousand dollar grant. I did make an inquiry to uh Mr. Presley that I'd like to get a copy of the grant. I don't know what the grant says, but uh from the information that I received from the uh. Party who presented the grant to the town, the P E C uh group, uh the grant is due to be. Cancelled or whatever, because there hasn't been any signatures or signed off by the town, this is what we were told at the meeting. This is something that someone told me personally, but it was just announced, and I was being directed as to, because I was there. As an official, that I knew something about it, which I did not know anything about the grant. Uh, but whatever it is, um I, once I get a copy of it, which I made up yesterday, I don't have it, I don't have it yet. I'll be able to kind of analyze it for myself, because it was kind of strange that I didn't think that the town would just sit on a. Two-hundred twenty-five thousand dollar grant and not sign it, so it has to be something pertaining to that, maybe you might speak on that or later on, because I, I haven't seen it yet. Um, also, uh, once we get that resolved, we can move forward. Or, also, um, my prayers for the Marine family, Mr. Clarence Haynes, whom remember was Saturday. Uh, it was a very nice uh celebration, his home going. Um, we uh, I know a resolution was prepared by the town when it was agreed, and I don't know what was delivered, but. It didn't get read, but it doesn't really matter at this point, um, we just uh just continue to have the family in our prayers. And uh, that way you can perceive it in lives. Now, I have received uh inquiries or. Uh, concerns about the loud noise at the new restaurant. I talked to the owner about this a little week ago. Uh, I don't know the hours of the restaurant, but he says that there will be some music or whatever that's played on the outside. And that's just a way how to get more people coming to Eatonville, just like the night market and all the other markets that we have. But the neighbors, one neighbor, right next door, in her backyard, is the same person. Who had to endure the situation about this dumpster right next to her house. She's a ill resident, she's been in the town for a long time, she is a senior. And she told me su- uh Sunday, she could not sleep Saturday night because of the music. Um, I brought this to Mr. Presley's attention about two weeks ago to kind of check with the restaurant to find out exactly how they are working this out. But we do need to maybe come up with something unless we already have an ordinance about loud music. So we need to deal with that uh accordingly. Um, the situation about, I agree, uh, the lawsuit. Uh, the town should always be informed in the attorney whenever something is going on, and I do agree with that. Um, also, I would say that um. I believe that's all that we have, but yeah, we do have an unresolved issue, it may be resolved, but I, we need to see some results on that waste container situation. That we had here on Clock Street, uh the, the whole container is still there, even though waste management. Uh, waste connections, they're picking up the garbage, but it's over on the other side of the driveway. So I don't know what is going to happen with that enclosure, the owner talked to me about a little over a week ago, he spent twenty-five thousand dollars. Just for that enclosure, and somewhere along the line, it was not done based upon. Where he wanted to go, he was told by a town employee where to put it, and it happens to be in the wrong place. And plus, it's not zoned to be in that location, so I'm hoping that the town can do a compromise. Give him his money, because it was not his fault, so he shouldn't have to eat the cost for that. Plus, he was made to put a twenty-foot concrete driveway up to the dumpster from the road. So I don't know, like I said before, I don't know any other uh businesses that have complied with the waste container. Uh, issue that we had here, and that been ever since September, October, two thousand twenty-three. So even we as the town, we have not even complied to our own ordinance. So before we can go and take a water hose to put somebody else's eye out, we need to take the same water hose and put our eye out. So we got the dumpster right over here on the side as you walk out of here, doesn't have an enclosure, but we want to force other people to do. So we need to be leaders uh of the town to show that this is our diligence, this is what we do. So when we do something, we should expect others to follow, so um that needs to be turned around. Um, other than that, I don't have anything else, and I just want to get a little bit more information on this block party, who's who sponsoring that?
I'm sponsored by. I don't really think about that.
Yes, okay, alright, okay, I just want to know who was sponsoring the block party. Other than that, that's all I have, and you all have a wonderful night and uh and be safe, thank you.
Goodbye for coming out, yeah, I do echo with Councilwoman Randolph saying about the dumpster enclosure, always. It's for my pet peeves, about we get all the people, but our house is underwater. I like to thank um Eatonville Super Supreme seniors are having a fun trip out to the other states, a nine-day vacation they had. We set them off good, me and Councilwoman Randolph, uh for the trip, that's uh Sunday mornings? Sunday morning? So, they having a fun time, we getting calls and text messages, what they doing, all that kind of stuff there, and I like to have uh. Agreements for one family, that's the Lane family, Kevin Lane, he was one of the legendary coaches at Wyman Tech back in the days. His repass is uh, it's on his friend, it's uh Saturday, the view on his Friday at New Covenant on Rio Graham. Um, this guy here, he was Wyman War back in the day, he coached football and basketball. And I was a youth at the time, he was doing all the things here, you know, I remember days we used to jump the fence, go to the, those games and. We used to put his son in the garbage can, playing with him. Then, son went to the NFL, and one day I was at his air salon, he said, you want a boy to put me in that garbage can? So back in the day, I said, yeah, we did you like that, canard, yeah, so, uh, so I, my wishes, my, I mean, my condolences go out to that family, because he really touched. Some of a lot of players, a lot of people in town Eatonville that played on his teams and basketball and football. And I did see some things, because I ended up doing some things at Wyman War, when I finished college, I used to give them all, cook them steak dinners. On homecoming games, steak and potatoes and salad, because you know, they were doing that for those kids over there at the time. And I learned that from when I went to junior high school at Maitland, when we had big games, we used to take those, the pumpkin roasts running at Maitland. At the time that was over there, we had steak, potatoes and all that kind of stuff, so I gave back to those guys there. About every homecoming game they had during the time he was over there, you know, so my, I mean, he, he touched me a lot, I mean, it, it touches me to. Know he's gone now, and I like to, to David Culpeper, my classmate. Um, I look at him as, he's a fisherman, and every time he go fishing, he'll call me, I got some sheep head. So he's a sheep head man, so they were very sensitive now, they want to make. But he always was a fisherman, so I, you know, he'd be dearly missed too, you know. And it's a tough, you know, like you said, we're losing people daily, so we got to keep having integrity, have respect on another, you wouldn't know. Man, I will take it, like you pull, you just don't know. We just don't know, so that's my thing in life, just treat people like I want to be treated. Respect, I know everybody not gonna be happy with the decisions I make, I'm not gonna give decisions they make, but just compromise. And we have to go on, be respectful, that's the main thing, be respectful. And with the pool, I think that um, yeah, I just support the pool, that's one of the things. I would love, I would love to see the aquatic center, we have a problem with air conditioning, we have weight rooms, all that kind of stuff there and swim lane and. That's what I supported for the pool, but like I said, our support was, was there now. And I do like to see it to be better, what we do have there, make it better, if we're gonna do it, let's make it better. Whether we get funds for it, lifeguards, and we do need that at pool open on those days, some days will. Um, who, who the YMCA can't be there for us, we need to have some backup lifeguards that certified. That have the certificates, CPR and lifeguarding. Because I was one of those kids one day in the pool when it was open, back when I was a youth. And the fence was a lot taller than that back in the day. Like a prison fence. I'm guilty of, because we jumping, yes, we did, so I know what happens, you know, when it's real hot. And we can't get the pool open, and it wasn't open, but that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you, um, looking for, first of all, thank you, Ms. Monday. Beyond words, thank you, you've done so much and the staff. The ordinance for noise doesn't state a des-. So I don't know how loud, so that's, that's one thing, the other thing is, we do have an ordinance. But it does mean that if we are to say, you know, lower, lower your, your noise. Then it is important that the complaints get registered. So that's why it's important for, instead of, you know, a council person going and, and hearing it out. They need to make the complaint, so now we have the documentation, now we can say, okay, here's the ordinance, here's what the ordinance says. Because we have an ordinance in place, until we change it, we need to follow it, even with what we do. So that's the main thing, is to make sure that if anyone is being bothered by the noise, that they make the complaint, register the complaint through the proper channels. Looking forward to the business academy, I think we have like forty-seven?
Yeah, forty-seven.
Forty-seven, um, registered for that. When, when we talk about visiting, you know, a vendor. Some, some have simple licenses, when we're talking about licensing yourself so that you cannot just do business with. Our town, but we do businesses, do business with any municipality, that's true growth. That's what we need to do for each other, you know, make sure that we can fish and not just turning your one fish and then giving you two. I'm, I'll keep saying that, so thank you, Ms. Monday, for that. Um, I was able to go see Trima Nisha, and it was an opera play at the Dr. Phillips. I definitely will go back and see that, if you ever, you know, get the opportunity, just to see, um, I think with them cooking in college. Um, beautiful voices, wonderful stage presence, so um I enjoyed that, I went there last Saturday. Condolences to the families as well, uh June fifth, state of the town, address is. State of the town is going to be, I don't remember the name of the building. Is it Orlando Regional Realtors Association Building? Which is right on the, you know, the back of. Circle, uh beautiful building, looking forward to this at five o'clock, June fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Please come get an update of what's going on in the town, um and I think you might be a little bit impressed. Um, with that being said, everyone, drive carefully, enjoy your eve, your night, um, and stay safe, yes.
So, um, I swear and counsel, my, um, there are a part with the, um, with the uh. Yeah, and program, we have not just for the kids, for adults.
Alright, that being said, um, is there a motion to? Alright, it's been moved as second, no, not fast, it's been moved as second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, alright, anyway, we are.